Good evening and welcome to the Town of Proctor Select Board Meeting for June 24th. If you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You?
There are like bumper cars there.
And if I can just make amendment to the agenda.
Sure.
So, a motion to amend the agenda to add and approve Sullivan Powers' letter for services as auditors. So they don't have to wait two weeks.
Audit letter. And we'll just do that under new business?
Yeah.
Okay. With that addition, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, motion to approve the agenda with the change.
And second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the minute of June 9th, a motion would be in order?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment. Okay. Good stuff. We have concerts coming up, right?
Yep. Concert July 9th is the first concert and Brian Baker will be cooking at the concert.
And it's Green Brothers. Yeah.
Yes.
Green Brothers Band.
So we have four scheduled for this year, so.
Yeah. And then just, we talked about the story walk before that they did at the high school and I just wanted to share that the Proctor Town four-story walk is in the Kamalide outside Summer Passport, which is kind of cool. We haven't had anything in here, so it's when people go around and you get a little mark every time you go someplace, so it's nice that we made it, so. Alright. Okay. Everyone looked at the bills, they moved around, and we have bids for the electrical. Is there only one?
Yep, just one.
Okay.
That is for the wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
Remember that we discussed they have to put the electrical box in there before the sludge removal can take place?
Okay. So.
Was it just the one bid?
Just one bid for $10,000. So we will let, um, are we letting DuBois and King look at this to see this is what they want? I mean, or who put the RFP together?
Um, it was our doing.
Okay.
We went out for it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be up to the board to decide, not DuBois and King.
Okay. Alright, what's the pleasure of the board?
When you say looking at the bid, the scope of the work?
Yeah.
Was that something, of course, they had to be given the scope of the work because they were putting a bid in for it.
Right.
But that, DuBois and King, the engineering house, had they had the opportunity to review the scope of the work to make sure everything?
They're the ones that gave me the scope.
Oh, okay.
They're the ones that sent me what the scope of the work would be, and that's what was put into the RFP for the quote. That's what that verbiage was put into there, so they have not seen this yet, obviously, because we just opened it.
Okay. So that's my thought, to let DuBois and King review it and then, um, if they approve it.
Yeah, they'll look at it and then they'll just let me know if it meets the needs and then if there's any questions, they can reach out to me or Jeff, I can reach out to you. I mean, did you want to speak to it?
I did the best I could with what information I had. It was very limited information, so.
Right.
If I had an actual electrical plan or something, or if I was able to meet with them one-on-one.
Yeah, they didn't have one. He just said basically it's just putting like on a, putting, upgrading the box to hold the, whatever the.
Yeah, so I don't, I just kind of went generic on what information I could.
Right, okay. Alright.
Then line on the bidding?
Today.
Today, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you need more information?
Well, I think, I think we should let DuBois and King look at it. If there's questions, then let them have a conversation.
Yeah, I'll send it to them tomorrow and then I'll ask them if it covers all the bases that they're looking for and then I'll just get back to you and then if you have any more questions, I can.
Yeah, even if they have, like, I don't know if they're bringing in a trailer, we're just looking into a trailer, what, if they just want a panel that with a bunch of plugs on it, so it's.
Right, to me, the way he described it to us was it's like he wants a new panel box on, I think there's one there that exists already, because I think the guy said something about maybe we could just add amps to that, or there might be even one outlet vacant still that we could plug into, but they probably didn't have enough amps in it, right?
Right, well, with Kyle and with the other two just Nick and I forget the other gentleman, he was kind of showing me some stuff, we were talking about some stuff there that they had mentioned, but they weren't clear themselves on exactly what.
Right, okay, so I'll just, I mean, based off of what they gave us to give you, I'll just give that to them and just say, is this suffice? And then we'll just.
I was going to say, if they had a much detailed spec or something.
Right, okay, alright.
How they give you a better place or not.
Okay.
I don't know. I was just trying to give you something to look at.
Right, right, no, I appreciate it. What I'd like, though, is if I send it to Boy and King and they're good with it, if I could have the board's approval tonight, if DuBois and King's okay with it, because I want to get the sludge moving.
Sure, yeah, we can do that. We can authorize it, yeah.
Just one more? Go ahead.
No, no, you go first.
No, I was just going to say, in that, you know, the people that got the, were awarded the bid for the sludge removal.
Yep.
In their quote, they put down required needs and I don't know, I can remember one saying, you know, the size of the amp service they needed.
Right, right.
I don't know if Jeff was able to see what their requirements may have been, just so there was no.
That would have been the requirement DuBois and King would have put out there.
Okay, well, they would have known what the bid winner wanted for, you know, services?
DuBois and King?
Yes.
DuBois and King would have, he read their proposal, realized what they needed for the power.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's what I want to make sure.
And that's the part, he took that piece out of it and gave it to me to give us.
Yeah, that's what I want to make sure.
Okay, so a motion would be in order to authorize the town manager to sign the contract upon approval of DuBois and King.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have two bids for paving. The first one's from Pike and it's for $195.38 and the second one from Wilk is for $156.96.90.
Can you read Pike again, 139? And Wilk is 156? Okay, knew there's a nine.
Alright. So I think a motion would be in order for the same to allow the town manager to review the bids?
Yeah, and I'll go, because what I asked them to do when we sent the bids out, I asked them to give me a bid for the whole project, but I also asked them to give me a bid if we could only, because the state funding wasn't there, you know, because it's not a class two, three road, or two road, and so I asked them to give me increments from the bridge, like, to a point, and then from that point to another point, so they were going to break it up, so, just in case the whole funding couldn't be there.
And the only other question I would have was last year, flagging wasn't included, you know, so both those bids include the flagging?
With both, last year they included flagging too, some of them, and some didn't. It was extra, if you wanted flagging, it was a separate chunk of money.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
And I don't think there's flagging in either one of these. No.
Why would the flagging be separate? Why would that be?
Because some towns provide their own flagging. Like, we put some of our people through the school, you have to take a class to be certified, and so it's, sometimes it's cheaper based on what the project is for us to, like, when they did that little patch down there, we provided our flaggers rather than paying someone $50 or whatever it is an hour, so. But neither one of these include flagging, so. So a motion would be in order to authorize the town manager to sign the contract upon review based on funds available.
All three things.
Second?
Which one?
For Judy to take.
For, for the paving.
Yeah, paving. But which contractor?
No, no, no. It's to give them both to her to review and look at, because they're broken down into separate components based on the funding as to which one. Alright, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. A motion would be in order to appoint Jason Ellison to the Park and Rec Committee and you have his application and he's here if you have any questions.
Motion to approve, Jason to the Park and Rec Committee.
Second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Go ahead, Julie. Come on board.
Um, the next one is, I don't know, it's not really an appointment, it's more of a conversation. We had this before about town constable, so Judy put in what the statutory requirements are. I don't know if you want to have any discussion about that, if, um, this is not a paid position if you do appoint someone, there are no funds allocated in the budget. The person that did it before did not receive any compensation, so, or if you want her to put it on the website to see if there are people interested based on.
Are you talking a constable for, we already have a constable, won't we?
We don't have her.
No.
We don't.
Well, the one we had resigned.
Retired.
Retired, yeah.
Resigned, retired.
Don, no longer listed as?
Yeah, yeah, Don, Don Steffany, yeah.
Okay, so now we need a new one.
And you don't need to have a constable? It's not a requirement? And there's different levels. If you have a constable that's going to do law enforcement, then they have to go through a lot more extensive training. You have someone that's just a civilian that, basically, the constable kind of backs up like Celia for tax collector, and they also assist with the help officer situations and do things like that, so if it's a civilian that's doing those things, then they could just take like a course in the league and, you know, that would suffice, but, but it's not mandatory that you have a constable in town. But if you know of anybody.
We haven't put out for anybody to?
No.
No. But we could put it on the website and see if there are people interested just to do it like that, if you're okay with that?
Yes, that would work with, you know, what their duties would be, responsibilities. It wouldn't be, you know, patrolling or doing other functions.
Right, although you'd get a cool sticker for your car, so.
Yeah, I think if people are interested, they could come in and chat with her, so, okay. So we will do that and see if there's any interest. Um, skating rink director's information update. So we passed around the handout to you. Judy is meeting with Wade on July 1st, so after we meet with Wade, then we'll come back and reassess what the concerns are based on what Wade has said for addressing them.
So I shared with them all of your, the sheets that you gave us with all the action items and everything, so they had all that, and then Wade also, and then I'm going to send Wade, if he can't, if I can't send that through, yeah, then when he comes down, I'll go through it with him and then we'll go over to the rink. I don't know, you want to be there too?
I can if you want.
Okay, alright. He's usually not punctual, so.
As long as I'm not working.
Okay, I'll shoot you an email anyway, just as a reminder, but he's supposed to be here at 10:00 on the 1st, so, and then I did go over and I took some measurements on the deck and stuff too, because based off some of the statutes, there is a lot of different criteria, as far as like the railing on the ramp, that I want to ask Wade about, because if it's, if it's six inches or less, then it doesn't require railing as long as the width is wide enough, and it is wide enough, and I didn't know if they meant like six inches from the ground to the platform, or six inches from the ground to the base of the deck, because he has a base platform there. Yeah, so, and my biggest concern, I think, with the deck is the foundation underneath. I think that's, that's what I want him to look at too, so, but if there's anything in particular you guys want to really point out, let me know, but he'll, he'll see this. Okay, and he'll see that, so, alright, so.
Alright, and then he'll provide a report too?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. Alright, zoning regulations on businesses in residential areas.
So I included that in there because when we started talking about delinquent water and sewer and going over the water rates and the water policy, there's a lot of places, I think, that have businesses that shouldn't be functioning as a business, because they're in a residential area, and they're also being charged like one unit for like just a household for water, and I know certain ones are using a lot more water, so, so I included that piece of it just to show you home occupations that are prohibited in, in the area, and one of them was machine repair shops, restaurants, automobile and manufacturer repair, or paint shops. So I just wanted to bring it to people's attention, because there is one that I know was never permitted probably or got authorization to, and it's, it becomes a big problem in the neighborhood, I guess, so.
Well, I'm not sure what we're looking at here, Judy.
So there's a handout that says, on one side it says Article 3, General Regulations, but we're looking at the other side of it, and it doesn't really have a heading, it just says.
Yeah.
The Home Occupations was on, it says page 18, so starting at that bottom and going to the.
It was part of the zoning regulations, and instead of printing up the whole zoning regulations, I just printed the piece that you're addressing or looking at.
Okay.
And you might have the zoning regulations in it.
So this seems, I mean, it seems like this is a planning and zoning issue that needs, I mean, we, we can't change the zoning regulations and we can't go around to properties, so it seems to me like this is where the Planning Commission should be like investing their time.
Yeah, they can, but the ultimate decision is the board's, and if the ultimate.
Well, the ultimate decision is theirs.
The adoption of the regulations is the board's.
Yeah, but they have to change the regulations, warn the regulations.
Right.
Do all the, that process work before it comes to this table.
Right.
So it seems to me like there's information that they should be gathering, like, they should be gathering how many home occupations there are, what they are, if they're permitted or not, I mean.
Right, the Planning Commission?
Well, that's their job, however.
And I would say they would also want a date when the business was established, because I don't know when the zoning was adopted originally, but what existed prior to the adoption of the zoning regulations can stay, and then, you know, moving forward from that date of adoption is when the regulation, zoning regulations would apply.
I'm doubtful there is anyone that has a home occupation that predates.
Yeah, I don't know when zoning was.
So, well, zoning would have started in the 90s, so, maybe before.
Yeah.
Maybe in the 80s, I'd have to look at the, but I still think that's their, that's their responsibility to do that.
And they're not meeting in July, they're meeting in August, in August, because I've tasked them with doing the zoning regulations over, so they've been working on it for months, and the Rutland Regional Planning Commission is helping them with the Act 250 for the development in the village town area, so that we can implement that in there, so we'll be grandfathered and we don't have to go through the normal Act 250 if there were to be a big development in the town. So they're coming August 7th to talk, and they're going to try to assist in at least putting that piece into the zoning regulations so that we can be approved by the state, so, so I can test them with this too, to make sure that while they're working on these zoning regulations, that this piece of it is addressed. I brought it to you more for, again, kind of related to the whole water issue. If you're running a business that's operating with the use of water and you're being charged as one residential unit, then that needs to be addressed. First, is the business legit? And secondly, if it is, if it is, then they need to be charged more for water.
Right, but I thought we decided you have to set some criteria, like, what is that going to be? Is it just that you have a business? So we're saying if you have a business at your residence, that you would be charged two water and two wastewater?
Depends on the business. I mean, if you're, if you're working for Amazon, I don't think we charge you for two waters too, but I'm saying that, I mean, and that's what you guys all said you wanted to do in July, is look at the water policy.
Right, but I'm just trying to think of the equity of it. I said that I thought you should create a tiered, say, system for commercial businesses based on employees, and I still think that. I mean, I think it should be, I think it's just like the school, I think the churches should be reassessed in the same capacity, businesses. This, to me, is a little trickier, because I'm not sure how you're quantifying, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just thinking like, I don't want to be in a situation like we were before, you know?
Right.
And so, I mean, you'd have to list what, like, if you are, I mean, the things that I would think would use water that would be a two warrant, two are prohibited.
Right. Right, exactly, that's what I'm saying. It's, you got to decide first if it's legit.
Yeah.
And then if it is, then do we, what, how do you rate them as a, and I think that's what you guys want to do. I gave you the new, the newer policy for water.
Right.
And to digest it, so the next meeting in July, you come back, actually, I think it was July 14th, you come back and then work on looking at what are, what are all the businesses in Proctor, and how do you want to rate those, how do you want to tier those?
So I think that the Planning Commission should be tasked with providing a list to this board of home occupations and if they are permitted or when they were permitted, and that should be something that could be provided to this board by October.
Okay, I think October's plenty of time.
Do we not have that information already?
Well, I think the issue is some of them, well, that's what I'm saying, like, they should be able to just go down and look in the book to assess that, but the other pieces, there are some that, like Judy was alluding to, that probably are not permitted, so that needs to be addressed also by planning and zoning.
I mean, some of the businesses are permitted through the state because of their operations and what they do, but I think locally, when somebody's, you know, operating a business that is within a neighborhood and obtrusive in a neighborhood, then I think it becomes an issue, and I don't believe there's any permit on it.
Right, well, I would think if they were permitted through the state, it would be some kind of requirement that the town would be notified anyways.
Correct.
And we would have that information without having to go look for it, but we don't, or we do.
Well, there should be a book downstairs, a zoning book, that the zoning administrators should be able to go through and pull permits, so, but that's, that's a responsibility of planning and zoning, that's not the responsibility of this board.
But I can guarantee every single permit that's in there is for a deck, an addition, a home removal, nothing having to do with a business permit.
But if there's a permit in there for a sign, there's a good chance that permit for a sign is for a home, is for a business at that property, so that is something that should be listed.
From advertising, they were saying advertising sign?
Yeah, if you have a sign on your property that's listing a business, then you had to get a permit to put that sign out there, so, or you should have, so, but that, that is the responsibility of planning. So I think they should be tasked with providing a list of home occupations, and then if there are other ones they know that are not permitted, they should provide a separate list for that, and they should be able to submit that to the board by, or to submit that to you by October. And then I think also, looking and seeing what that list is may make you change, I mean, these are kind of 1950-ish home occupations, maybe.
Just updating it.
Yeah, and then that would allow you, if you want to set new criteria, like Judy said, for assessing two water and two wastewater to a home occupation, that you have some foundation to start to create that criteria.
Do you think October's a long time?
Well, they're not meeting, I, I don't know, I was trying to be.
I mean, if they meet, they're not going to figure it out anyway while they're meeting, so, I mean, I would think they'd have to do the legwork during like.
I'm happy if they can have it by September.
Yeah, I mean, all it would take is somebody to come in for an hour and look through the permit book and realize there's no permits. I mean, seriously.
Well, if they could have it by September, that would be great, but, once again, that's their responsibility.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Vacation carryover.
Oh yeah, so I, I needed to carry over a week. I don't know, there's questions on what I have and what I don't have, so we're just.
Needed to do what?
So Judy has a week of vacation she'd like to carry over to next fiscal year, so starting July 1, she'd start with an additional week, because it's time she hasn't used. Does anybody have any objections, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And credit cards for utility payments.
So I checked with a couple other municipalities and Pittsburgh does take credit cards, I haven't been able to get details of it, they go through a credit card company, and they, basically, the chargeback for the credit card, because everybody who uses a credit card system gets charged for it, gets put back on the taxpayer, like the person paying their bill, it's all incorporated into that, so the town's not paying an additional fee for using credit card systems. I haven't gotten the details, no one's gotten back to me yet on that, and then the other one is a credit card service, but that is more for online, so you can pay by credit card online, and I'd rather not, I'd rather avoid that right now, because that would be a whole new website, it would be a lot, a lot more involved, rather than just allowing people to pay a bill with a credit card, so.
Doesn't Robin allow that to?
Pay online?
Well, I mean, just pay with a credit card?
Yeah.
Okay.
They just, they just started that, I think, what, two, three years ago, maybe?
I think paying with just a credit card would be a huge step for Proctor anyway, so nothing going online, you know?
Right, so I don't know if, I got to talk to them downstairs about if it's our current bank that we just try to get through, go through, or if we find a credit card company that would be willing to do the, you know, the roll back with the fee.
And whatever, and whatever their service charges. And whatever, and whatever their service charge is, that just goes to...
Right, into the charge for, yeah. Like, when I, like, some places will charge you, if you use a credit card, they'll charge you 25 cents, because they have to pay a fee every time somebody swipes their card.
Yeah.
So, if that is just incorporated into that.
Yeah, I think it would be good if it was a flat fee, not a fee based on what they're, not a percentage of what they're paying. So, people can, like...
It's always the same.
Yeah.
Albert?
The equipment that's required to process a credit card purchase or payment, would the service charge cover the cost of that, or is that a separate rental fee for, you know, the scanner and...
Right, I think that's a purchase you'd make, or a rental, yeah.
Do you know how much that would be?
I do not know.
And that would probably determine whether you went with our bank, or you went with...
Right.
Credit card servicing.
I would like to know, you know, some ballpark figure as to what that may cost us.
I'm waiting for them to answer me, so that, because that's the route they went, I think, just taking credit cards over the counter versus just checks cash. Who's that "they"? Pittsburgh? Oh.
Okay, so maybe by, at next meeting, we have a little more information. Yeah, I, it's just, you know, a step in the right direction, I think.
Have you talked to downstairs about it, Jude?
Not yet.
Well, I've talked to Mary about it, I think. Because I think it would be, it's going to be up to her if she wants to accept credit cards for taxes or not. Yeah, so, I mean, I'm just focusing more on utilities right now.
Right, so that was our start, just water and waste water, because that's what we have per view of her. So, to do it for taxes, then Celia would have to agree to that, so... Okay, I think it's good to keep moving forward on that. All right, our motion would be in order to move into the Board of Water Commissioners.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody had it in their pocket, the drinking water system rules and regulations? And so, you said last time that we were going, if there was, if there were areas where you wanted to start the discussion, or the review, or how you'd like to address it? Do you want to go section by section? Are there particular sections you'd prefer to start with?
Not going to do this all at one time.
No. I mean, I think with respect to the definitions, that's probably something you could just move along. Definitions should be defined by...
I think there are some clarifications we've got to have in that section.
In definitions?
Definitions, yes, because a lot of that's going to drive, you know, our decision-making. You know, I don't, you want, you want to jump right into that, or do you want to first decide, you know, which sections you want to do and...
Well, I mean, if you have issues about definitions, it's difficult to...
Well, not it, not issues with the definition, but what is it, it's implying that definition.
Well, then I think that should be cleared up first, before you try to...
Yes, that's, there's a number of things there.
Okay.
I think that, you know, kind of sets the ground rules for how we...
So, let's start there. So, you want to start with definitions or general provisions?
Uh, I would like to, I would like to start on page two and three, section eight.
But you're not starting on tonight.
Well, we can talk about...
Oh, okay.
This was tabled last time to move to July 14.
Yeah, but can we just have him tell us what he's concerned about?
Oh, yeah.
So, we can just look at those issues.
But if we just do definitions like July 14?
Yeah, but if there are any definitions that are of concern, I'd just like to be able to circle those, so I could focus on those.
You know, and this is just so everybody's on the same page about the commissioners. You know, the last part, or the last sentence there says, "Making and establishing our needful water rates, charges, rules, and regulations for its control and operation." So, that definition gives us a lot of responsibility and authority.
Okay, so that's, so let's just go through and circle where the definitions that you want to discuss when we come back in July.
Okay, you know, that one?
No, I'm, I don't...
Albert, do you need light on?
No, no. And then, section five, page six.
Oh, so that's the only definition?
No, I think there may be others.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay, let me skip that, and I'll go back to that one. That's, that was something other than a definition. Section 37, page three, ratepayers. And what drove this was, you know, the inspection that I did at Vermont Marble Company, you know, and, you know, what's a ratepayer?
Okay, okay.
You know, I don't know if we may want to expand that a little bit, in that, you know, it means the property owner, user, or occupant of any tenement, house, or building, you know, that takes water of the town. And when you think of it, you know, you've got Proctor Marble that's in that building, it's owned by, you know, Zion. And how do you treat that? Is the property owner just charged one base unit, or that's a standalone business that rents in that building a portion? And do they pay also one base unit, because they are a standalone business? Or what's the driver that's there? You know, they are a tenant of that building. It's just like Simon's place up here. They're getting charged 17 units. Now, how is that tenant different than the tenants up here that are paying 17?
That holds up, the definition is very poor, because to me, the ratepayer is the owner, the one who's paying it, it's not the tenant.
So, I think if we just go through and circle the ones that's concerned...
Okay, yes.
Then we can go and one, look and see if there's, if the state definitions have been updated, or if there are definitions in other communities that we like better, that we can bring back and craft our definition.
Okay, yes, that's one, I would like to see is, you know, what's a ratepayer? Because it says it's a tenant of a building, and they are a tenant of a building.
Okay.
So, there might be some gray area there. And then...
I'm guessing curb stop, there was some...
Yes, I was going to say, I'm going to jump...
So, that's section 14 on page three?
Yeah.
Okay.
The service, well, yeah, curb stop. You know, and that's pretty clear, you know, what it is. The only thing we're going to decide is, you know, with an existing, without, what we're going to do about.
Okay.
The curb stop, and then the service line.
Okay.
You know, defines the service line. And then... And the service connection, you know, that defines that, you know, the service line is one portion of it, the building connection line is the other, and the two combined creates the service connection. And in all three of those definitions, it says, you know, who's responsible for the payment, and who's responsible for repairs. And in the, in the definition of, or not a definition, but in the general requirements, I think it was in the general provisions, it said that, you know, for new installations, the homeowner pays for everything. So, you may have to go back to another section to find that. But those three should be looked at, just so we all know what the ordinance is saying.
Okay, I think section 44, special charges, that definition should be addressed also. It's a little antiquated.
Yes, and that one too, because again, it only says facilities and equipment. It may have to have occupancy, and what drives, you know, whether a place has to be looked at for additional facilities and equipment? You know, that's got to be addressed, and I think we may have to put a figure in there.
And then, I would say 51 unit or dwelling, that should be reviewed. And I would say section 50, that's slightly confusing, even to me what it means, so... I mean, I, that, those are pretty significant ones. So, I would encourage people to, one, review them, two, if you think there's an issue, three, you can probably go on other town websites, and they have their regulations posted, and you could review and look at them and see if there's something. I'll try to make copies of different ones, look at the state like that, and see if there, just for examples to bring of different definitions of those. So, we will review these definitions at the July 14, is that what you said?
Yes.
And then, then we'll pick the next group or next section that you want to review, and kind of go that way, all right? Okay.
And then, when you're thinking of the definitions, do they meet the needs of what the town has? You know, think of the businesses that are here, and, you know, do our definitions incorporate the situations that we have?
Well, I think, do they meet needs, and are they, I don't know, the only word that comes to mind right now in the heat is understandable, but can a layperson understand what the purpose of the definition?
Intent, yeah.
Yeah, the intent, that's good, intent.
Yeah.
This information is on the website?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, if you look to, like, policies or ordinances, or ordinances, there's a tab for that, so... Okay, and then, I mean, the other piece we have are the schedule and rate fees, and I don't know how you want to address those, if you want to, once before, we did look at other places, most places have. Well, I don't know, I think maybe to start, maybe we should look at other communities that do not have...
Meters?
Meters, and how they are addressing that. So, does Pittsburgh have meters?
I don't think so. I don't know, I have to double check.
And I was just going to say, you know, with the fee and rate schedule, yeah, that's going to be an item to review in itself, and I think we've got to get rid of the EU. That just creates too much confusion. And in the definitions, we may want to add one, in that when we're thinking about base rate, if we charge a person, are we going to charge every household one EU like that schedule says? Or are we going to use a different terminology about base rate? Everybody pays one base rate or base fee, or is there going to be a base unit? You know, what?
Well, and that's why I think it's good, maybe to look at other communities that don't have meters, and see what their verbiage is. What are they calling it? Are they calling it a base unit, a base rate? What are they doing? And then, we can, so I'll try to find some of those and make copies. I mean, this is just what we have, we don't have to have anything like this. We can completely revamp this.
Yeah, I'll include that, because I think the last meeting, you didn't want to address that until you addressed the policy.
Yeah, right. But I'll see if I can still find, still find copies of things, so you could just have to, because if we're going to perhaps call it something else, then that's something that should be addressed in the definitions as we're moving.
I think Rutland, I'll check with them, because they used to use a base rate, I think it was, before they went to meters.
Yeah.
I was going to say, it was some time ago, I reached out to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and asked the question, can you give me the name of any communities that have municipal water that do not use meters? And they could not provide that information. But they did say, and I got rid of the email, probably should have saved it, there's a meeting place or forum where I think town managers may go, and they were suggesting that maybe you could go there and ask, you know, if that, anybody knew of any communities that had municipal water without, you know, meters.
Yeah, I don't know what they're talking about.
But they could not give any, and I tried to do a search.
Is there town managers lists, or like, there's, oh... Well, I mean, it's easy enough just to go on websites and see, and just, I mean, I just call people and ask them.
Yeah, I just...
I try, going on...
Reach out to the town managers and ask them.
But I struck out Lisa.
Yeah, so I'll do that and see what I can find, and so, at least when we're looking at definitions, if there's some kind of verbiage we want to change in there to address that, we can start with that.
I mean, I could find out, you know, I think we have books that have what towns have water departments, and if they have a water department, they got water, so, just check with those individual towns to see how they...
Is there anything out there, like the state have guidelines, recommendations, history?
Well, some of that stuff there, that confusing part comes from the states.
But it's also very old.
Yes, it's all right here.
Oh, yeah.
Title 24, chapters 89 and 129 in the state. Yep, that's the state, that's where...
All right, anything else for water? Hearing none, motion would be in order to move to the Board of Sewerage Commissioners.
So, sludge removal, once I talk to the engineers as far as the electrical quote, and we get that done, hopefully, if we go with Jeff, he can get it done soon. And then, once that's in there, then they can start moving in and preparing for the sludge removal. They were there today, meeting with Public Works. I have an email out to them to find out what exactly happened, and if there's any status update, once the electrical's in, how soon they can start. Their initial time was June, late June, early July.
So, when it goes to bids, is it one bid, or we, because we want to get moving, right? Wouldn't we look for two, three bids?
I went out, yeah, I did, I requested bids from other.
Got nothing?
And nobody put a bid in.
Nothing.
Yeah, I went out for three bids for electrical, and I believe for paving, I went out to at least six.
Okay. Anything else?
Paving's not cheap. Nope, I don't think so.
All right, motion would be in order to leave the Board of Sewerage Commissioners and reopen the Sludge Board.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, everyone has the sheriff's report. Seemed like a light period.
Yeah, fine wise, there was some good, I mean, like, one was road rage, and there was a gun in the car, so it's not a good thing.
I was just surprised how thick the packet was, that it was like, just, you know, one warning or two tickets or something. It's a lot of conversation. All right, town managers' report.
All right, so they paved East Street, if anybody went over it?
Yeah.
They got that done. I asked the guys, I said, geez, it seemed like they brought their whole company with them, so, but they, I went down there again today to check on it, and it's good.
Yeah, did a good job.
Yeah, so, sent the certification of delivery to the state for the Millian Consumer Confidence Reports. Don't know if you all read your water reports, but they were inaccurate, so I had to re-mail them all, because the printer printed the wrong report. So, the new ones went out yesterday.
What was missing on the first one?
It wasn't missing, they just took last year's report...
It said 2023.
And printed it.
Oh, good. I knew that.
Uh, let's see. Met with Jeff Lewis on the asset management plan for water department, discussed the sludge removal, sent out letters for quotes, which we talked about already, for the electrical. There was a traffic speed sign, I don't know if I mentioned that last time, placed at 219 South Street by the owner, contacted sheriff, and the state contacted me. They were in violation of the state statute, you cannot put speed limit signs that mimic a state highway sign, and was asked to take it down. And since has put up another sign, which is slightly different verbiage, saying, "Slow down, speed limit 25," so, I'm not sure if...
Are they just told to take them down, or is there a fine for that?
I think he just...
I think he just told them to take it down, yeah.
I think, yeah, in X amount of time, so I think he waited something else.
The state was more upset with it than...
Yeah. And that's just something that has, uh, speed limit on it.
Right. And unfortunately, it, it doesn't deter, I mean, they're going right out of town, and in, you know, fifty feet, they're going fifty miles an hour.
What was the, the speed limit? They put a speed limit sign up?
Twenty-five.
They had two of them on poles. They looked legit, like a real twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign.
So, when you come through town, you come up through, it's twenty-five miles an hour, and then when you get out to Route three, it's fifty. Right, so, but people start going thirty-five, forty, once they hit LaFond's and...
That's what it should be. They should change that.
That's a good way of looking at it.
I think we should change it.
That's a whole nother conversation.
Right, right. Uh, mosquito spraying, they did again on the twelfth. I think we're gonna be, again, pretty soon, because they've been sending me emails, they've been doing Brandon, Lester Salisbury this whole last few days, so Brandon's...
Probably tomorrow.
Brandon's being tonight, yes, it might be.
He seems to be on the Wednesday schedule.
A lot of people complain that they're doing it too much. A lot of people complain they're being missed. A lot of people complain because they're doing it.
No, it's doing good. I think there's been a definite difference.
Finally, they were bad.
And then the town will see that complaint, you know, from twenty-five Bluff.
Yeah.
In that, uh, you know, two drivers did that route. And there's that thirty-four Taylor, because of bees, there's the no spray zone.
Okay.
And with the proximity of the Taylor Hill, uh, stop areas, or the, the markers.
Right.
You know, when they're going up Bluff, they, they know that's proximity to that marker on Taylor. They were just a short distance over, backing up, you know, on Bluff. They felt that they were encroaching on that no spray zone, so that's why they stopped. But, you know, with the new software that's on, uh, 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 trucks and the spraying equipment, they download the information, and it shows the, they went to the spray zone, and it shows that, yes, they could go back further. So, they will be going to the end of Bluff Street anytime going forward.
No, he's been good. I've been emailing him, and he's been emailing me back, and he told me they were gonna go down and check the truck the other day for GPS to see if they went into Bluff or not, so...
Yeah.
But yeah, and that's what, it is hard when people don't want to be sprayed, and your next door neighbor does. It's harder than a driver, more than anybody.
And just bear in mind, in that, uh, all of the employees of OCW have full-time jobs. This is their other jobs, you know, uh, uh, the only two that get forty hours a week is the entomologist and the operations coordinator. In that, uh, you know, they do work full-time jobs, they come in, you know, in the early evening and work their, put their time in, and therein they may have, you know, hundreds of phone calls that they have to respond to.
Right.
And so, just be patient, you know, if you call, it may take, uh, uh, two days or three days, you know, if it's an emergency, you know, then...
I don't, I email them now and just say, and explain what streets were hit, or whatever. Um, I've told people that say they, I said, don't call them yourselves. Um, you know, I said, just reach out to me and let me know, and I'll reach out to them myself and let you know, you know, let them know the information, because if people, if every person calls, because they'll never get back to anybody because they want the time.
Over, I think right now they have like six hundred calls, just over six hundred.
Right.
You know, and...
Okay, um, I gave you, handed out the skating rink update, and we kind of went over that already. Um, grant agreement for the clean water funding, um, was done, in kind, using Public Works crew. So, we got that approval, and I attended Rutland Regional Planning Commission Emergency Management Meeting, um, last week. And I think that's it.
Any questions? All right, the older new business.
Oh, so the new business would be the Sullivan Powers. I'm not sure. They have a free signature. Lines on here, but I guess the more the merrier, so if you can sign both, so that they have an original, we do.
So, we haven't taken action on this before though, right? Did we approve them?
Yeah, there are, I mean, there are auditors every year.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Just an explanation of their service.
Okay.
I just wanted them to wait two more weeks to...
Okay, I sign one. This way, if you hear, Jake can sign one. I don't need to sign them all.
See Stu?
That one going back the other way, is that what this is?
Did you get the figure?
Yeah. I did, I got that first.
Let's put that back in there, so...
Oh, I didn't know if you took it down or not.
I do have it in the morning.
Oh.
And Mary's not here, so...
It kind of feels cool, and now it's time to go.
That's just because you acclimated to it.
I was gonna say, either that or my body's just ac, really acclimated. All right, if there's nothing else?
What's next?
Uh, motion would be in order to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Arnger?